Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the school committee meeting. I'd like to call to order the meeting of April 11th, 2012. Roll call, first item of business. Everyone is present, Lynda. Thank you. Our next item of business is approval of items by consensus. Superintendent Benton.
Good evening, everyone. There are four items on the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of March 28th, regular session. Approval of the field trip, the Lake George Strings Trip warrants, R-27228, FS-21, FS-22, G-418, G-419, L-52, L-53, L-54, L-55, and payroll warrant 32812.
Okay, thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 28th, regular session. Mrs. Bonish.
I move to approve the minutes of March 28th, regular session.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Hayes? All those in favor? Unanimous, Lynda. Thank you. I'd approve a motion to approve the warrants as so read by the superintendent. Mr. McCasey.
Make a motion to approve the warrants as read.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second, Dr. Quick. Thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous, Lynda. Thank you. And I'd approve a motion to -- I entertain a motion to approve the payroll of 32812. Dr. Quick.
Motion to approve payroll 32812.
And do we have a second? Second, Mr. Hayes. All those in favor? Six in favor, abstain, one. Thank you. And I would entertain a motion to approve the field trip for the middle school to Lake George, New York. Mr. Veil.
I'd like to move that the committee approve the field trip to Lake George, New York for the middle school.
Great. Do we have a second? Mrs. Bonish, second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Lynda. Excellent. All right. Our next item of business is Michaela Dambrosio, our school committee representative from the high school. Thank you, Michaela.
Okay. The 9/11 Club and Mall UN went to New York City yesterday to see the 9/11 memorial and the United Nations Building. The spring sports are underway with a good start to the season for all the sports. Report cards for quarter three were distributed today. The Costa Rica trip landed safely last night, and the England trip leaves tonight. DECA held a successful fundraiser with the Harlem Superstars basketball team last week. The annual pops concert featuring the high school jazz band, middle school jazz band, and the soundscape will be held tomorrow night. The juniors attended a live performance in the auditorium of Tales of Poe during the week, and juniors and seniors both saw the Yellow Dress presentation yesterday. And the 9/11 committee met with the architects to discuss the possibilities for the memorial. And sophomores participated in MCAS during the last week of March.
Wow. That was excellent.
Thanks.
There's so much going on. It's just incredible.
There's a lot going on.
Does anyone have any comments? Thank you very much, Michaela. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
It's nice for the community to know how much is going on at the high school.
Right.
Can I have your hand? And you don't have to stay for the whole meeting. Thank you. All right. Our next item of business will be under new business. Mrs. Benton.
First item is approval of the summer school program for the summer of 2012. Includes grades six through 12. The programs are designed for students who need an opportunity for makeup remedial or enrichment instruction. I put -- there's an error there. They're not going to be conducted at the high school. They're going to be conducted at the middle school this year. We're moving everything to the middle school with hopes that we will be knocking down the gymnasium before the week of July.
Okay. Yep, you had that on the phone there. Does anyone have any questions about this, summer school program? Okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve the request to operate the 2012 summer school programs. Dr. Quick.
Motion to approve the request to operate the 2012 summer school programs.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mrs. Carroll. All those in favor? Unanimous, Lynda. Thank you. All right. Our next item of business is our summer sports camps.
Like permission to start advertising our summer sports clinics. Again, all the clinics will be held at the middle school this year. And we've gone back to the Monday through Friday format. Last year it was a four-day, and I think we lost some people because it wasn't a five-day event. So we're going to try going back to the five-day and see how we do. As you know, this is a moneymaker for us, and the funds go towards the athletic department.
Could I ask one question? This is probably a crazy question. LAX, what's that stand for?
Lacrosse.
I thought so. Okay.
Los Angeles International Airport.
That's the one thing my grandson's playing, and I thought that must be it because it's not on here anywhere else. But that's good to know. Thank you very much. I'd entertain a motion to approve the 2012 summer sports clinics. Mrs. Bonish.
I make a motion to approve the 2012 summer sports clinics.
And do we have a second? Dr. Quick. All those in favor? Unanimous, Lynda. We have to go more slowly. We're almost done. Here we go. Our next item of business, smoking cessation program proposal.
Principal Tracy would like to offer a smoking cessation program to the high school students. Kim Donovan and Doreen Crowe have made this proposal. They had gone to a workshop called Calling It Quits. The purpose of the program is to inform and provide students with resources, education, and support to students who wish to quit tobacco usage. The goal of the program is to implement the protocol to assist students wishing to quit smoking. The cost of the program is free of charge and can be completed at four to six health office visits. The school committee policy, IHAMA, requires that any program related to drug, alcohol, or tobacco education be approved by the school committee. This is the curricula for the program. Obviously, it's voluntary.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Dr. Quick.
Mrs. Benton, do you know, has this been done at other? I'm just curious as to what the...
This is a program that was implemented by the Mass Department of Public Health. It has been presented in, I think it's about 78 high schools already, and it's been very successful.
Has it?
And that's why the teachers were excited.
Great.
I mean, the nurses were excited about it.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Veil.
Do we have any data or information on how prevalent smoking and tobacco use is at the high school and how that number has trended over the past five, 10, 15 years?
In a total data, I don't know. And the surveys that the students fill out for the, you know, risky behavior surveys, interesting enough, there was a real decline in smoking about eight years ago, but it's back up in the past two years. And which is interesting. I'm not sure why with students. But I mean, we have numbers.
Like 1% or 10% or? And then is this broken down by class? Ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth?
It is broken down by class. I don't want to be misquoted, but I would say about 18%.
Oh. Wow. Wow.
I take it it's against school policies to smoke on campus?
They can't. They have to -- it's off so many feet from the school campus as well.
Even adults who come in and who like want to smoke in the parking lot on the way through, it's against the state law.
There's a $50 fine to town ordinance.
Mrs. Carroll.
I've noticed too that no smoking at the Wilmington Regional, not even in your cars. You can't even smoke in there.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
It's a tough one.
There's a big couple signs.
Do we know anything about how the percentage of students smoking at Wilmington compares to other communities?
I could look it up for you. I mean, I can get that information from the DPD.
For benchmarking purposes?
Sure, I'll get that for you.
Thank you. All right. I'd entertain a motion to support the smoking cessation program. Dr. Quick.
Motion to approve the smoking cessation program at the high school.
Mr. Hayes, second. All those in favor? Unanimous, Lynda. Thank you. Our next item of business is the bid for student transportation services. Mrs. Benton.
We put out a bid for student transportation. Mr. Gerald did an outstanding job in writing, putting together the bid. It took a lot of time, and he really did a great job. We had nine people requested bid packages, but we only had one returned, and that was North Reading Transportation, which is the bus company we have been using and we're recommending that you approve North Reading Transportation as the bus company for the Wilmington Public Schools and allow Paul to enter contract with them from August 1st, 2012 through July 31st, 2015. Mr. Gerald can answer questions.
Okay. Dr. Quick.
So just correct me if I heard incorrectly. You said all these went out, but only one was returned?
Correct.
Do you know why that would be?
It's hard to really know, but the belief there is it's somewhat difficult and costly for companies to come into this area. There's not a lot that operate in this area. And to come in, it's difficult from a cost-effective standpoint. You know, they have to buy buses, they have to find a place to house them and all that. So that was the thought of why more didn't respond to the, or submit a bid.
Okay. Mr. McCasey.
Mr. Gerald, was there any follow-up? I know you received, you know, the one bid, whatever, and to seal the bid, however, you know, and then you open up whoever comes. Was there any other follow-up or? And the reason why I ask this is because I don't know why nine people took out the packages, only one submitted. That's very, to me, it's personally suspect. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it. The reason why I'm asking this is because I would like to find out, say, when Tuck Spray goes out for their transportation bid, does North Reading bid on their transportation? Or is it just Tuck Spray Transit who submits a bid? When nine people submit packages and ask for that much information and don't submit a bid, again, I don't think there's anything wrong with what we did, but the nine themselves, I still don't understand why they wouldn't, if they go through all the trouble of getting a package, wouldn't even submit a bid, and you only had one. I just, I'm just curious.
Then we can follow up and contact them why they didn't submit a bid. Sometimes companies, I assume, go and pick them up just to see what's out there and what you're requesting and so forth. A couple of the companies were actually, I believe, manufacturers of buses who just looked, because, you know, sometimes the companies would have to, you know, go and do a contract to lease or purchase additional buses. But we can follow up with some of these companies and just ask them why they didn't.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Veil.
I know the RFP document doesn't come to the school committee, so we don't typically see it and review it before it goes out. But is there any kind of green or environmental purchasing preference that's expressed in the documents for alternative fuel buses or energy efficient or fuel-efficient buses?
No.
Could we start to add provisions like that in procurements to see what starts coming back? I know this isn't bid very often, but I think we have to start expressing a preference for what we like, and hopefully the market will begin to respond.
We're actually talking about that tonight, today.
Yeah.
My only follow-up comment to that, I'm sorry. My only follow-up comment to that is I would request it to be such as an ad alternate because obviously to go to cost-efficient buses, obviously there'll be, you know, up charge. And I understand we need to go green, and a lot of these buses, you know, they run on, you know, on diesel, you know, and to clean them up, there'd be a charge. So that's what I would say, if something like that would happen.
That's why I express it as a preference and not as a requirement.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. I'd entertain a motion to grant North Reading Transportation a new contract from August 1st, 2012 through July 31st, 2015. Mrs. Bonish.
I move to grant North Reading Transportation a new contract from August 1st, 2012 through July 31st, 2015.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Hayes? All those in favor? Unanimous, Lynda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Kane?
Yes.
Whatever.
They'll say yes.
We'll say yes.
Who would you like, Mr. Veil?
I'm not sure if this is timely or not, but it's a little bit apropos, given my comment on the prior motion, is that my understanding is under the Massachusetts School Building Authority's building program, where I know we're building this new high school and we're attempting to get an additional 2% for doing it as a green school. I believe there are one or more points available in the program if the school committee passes a resolution, basically adopting a policy that whenever freezers or other equipment are purchased for the school, they be Energy Star qualified equipment. I'd request that we look into that, and if there are some motions relating to purchase of green electricity or Energy Star qualified equipment that qualifies us for one or more points, that we enact those resolutions to make sure that we score those points and get the extra 2%.
We have a school building, a working committee tomorrow. I will ask. Bring it up very timely. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Okay. We're on the first reading of identification and procedure for obsolete and discarded textbooks and library books. Mrs. Benton.
Mr. Hayes, Mrs. Kane, and I met to draft a policy for identification and procedure for obsolete and discarded textbooks and library books. It's a first reading. And therefore, I have to read it into the minutes.
The entire thing?
Yes. That's the way that...
Okay.
Purpose is to provide a standard procedure for the identification, disposal of obsolete or discarded textbooks and instructional materials. All property purchased through district-approved budget, school funds, or donations remain exclusive property of the districts. As such, these items shall not be resold by any employee without permission of the superintendent or designee. Identification of obsolete textbooks, outdated books identified by the copyright year and determined by current curriculum framework standards. The current textbooks are listed on the Wilmington Public Schools textbook inventory, not all approved or department inventory, not on all...
Not on approved.
On approved and/or department inventory list. Poor physical shape, film or paper brittle, covers faded, pages yellowed or torn, books covers scratched or warped, binding ragged, poor format, small printer, poor quality pictures, poor content, out-of-date material, inaccurate information, inappropriate for the specific grade level, neither circulated nor used for reference, interest or reading level inappropriate, or change in district curriculum and/or age group. And then there's a procedure for disposal of obsolete textbook library books. All textbooks and other assets are the sole property of the Wilmington Public Schools. School or administrative staff is not permitted to dispose of school property except as authorized in accordance with this procedure. One copy will be kept for historical purposes. The principal should provide the superintendent with a complete written description of any textbook considered obsolete. Textbooks are to be held at the location until further notice. The method of disposal used on particular textbooks or other assets should result in the best overall benefit to the Wilmington Public Schools. Methods of disposal must be approved by the superintendent and will be done consistent with state and city ordinance. The approved methods of disposal include, but are not limited to, donate to a nonprofit organization or relief fund at no cost to the district, return to the supplier for trading or credit, sell by public rotation to the highest bidder, sell by cooperative public auction with other public agencies, sell to a used book dealer through an RFP or recycle.
Thank you.
We will bring this back on in May.
Does anyone have, Mr. McCasey?
About this, but I just want to backpedal, just want to previous issue, just real quick, just to follow up with Quincy's comment. Mrs. Benton, I know you said that you'll go forward, you know, at least go to the building committee and talk to them about energy efficiency purchases, but I would like to actually go one step further and actually bring it to the policy subcommittee to actually develop a policy, not just specifically for the new building to try to get points, but for all the buildings as a whole, that any new equipment we buy throughout the district be Energy Star efficient.
Seems like a good idea.
I think that the policy that Quincy was talking about would cover that.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, but all I'm asking is that it would go forward to the policy subcommittee.
Okay. Okay. All right. So we'll have the vote on this. If you have any questions in between, feel free to contact the superintendent or Robert. Or Robert, or myself.
Sure.
We'll send it to Robert. He will be the contact man on this one.
Sure.
That'll be good. Okay. Our next item of business is the 2012-2013 school calendar.
The attached calendar has the CIT days and the full professional development day on the calendar. We, in support of the town clerk, on election days, choose that day to close down the schools for election purposes. So we're proposing November 6th as the full day professional development and continue with three CIT days. We have had very positive feedback from the community on our change to Friday afternoons for CIT days. Parents have appreciated the fact that we changed the calendar. Apparently, it's easier to get off on a Friday afternoon than it is on a Wednesday afternoon and or make arrangements. So we're going to continue with that for next year.
And the first day of school will still be the teacher day on the 27th?
Yes.
Okay. So school will start on the 27th on this calendar of August and...
Teachers.
Teachers. And students will start on the 28th?
First through 12th.
First through 12th.
And kindergarten starts on September 4th.
Okay. So parents will know. And if we have snow, we have the five days built in, and we'd be getting out on June 18th, which we haven't done in many a year, so that'll be interesting. All right. I'd entertain a motion to approve the calendar 2012-2013 school year. Oh, sorry. Mrs. Carroll.
I move to approve the calendar for 2012-2013 school year.
Thank you. And do we have a second, Mr. Hayes? Okay. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Five in favor, abstain or abstain?
Abstain.
One abstain. Okay. Thank you.
I just have one question.
Oh, sure.
Is the June 18th date, does that include those findings or not?
Yes, it does.
It does. Okay. Okay. Our next item of business is the school choice vote.
By law, the school committee every year has to take a vote whether to participate in school choice program. Traditionally, Wilmington School Committee has annually voted not to participate. I am recommending a move not to participate in the state schools' choice program because of lack of available space to accommodate out-of-town students. Although I will say that Mr. Hayes asked a good question today. Would I, if, with the enrollment going down, would I consider it? And I said absolutely, when the new high school is built, I think it'd be a great way to bring in a little extra revenue because I think there will be space and we may attract some students from other communities.
And we receive $5,000 per out-of-district student?
That's correct. And we have one student who is attending Burlington High. Burlington High has school choice at high school level, and this is a family that moved to Wilmington, and she wanted to complete her senior year in Burlington, so she's Burlington.
But in effect, just to make the even sides of it, how much does it cost us to educate the child? We're giving the $5,000 to her, but it costs us in Wilmington how much to educate?
What's the net?
Yeah. So just to...
We lose, we do not get the Chapter 70 funding, which is about...
Yeah. Our per pupil expenditure for FY11 was about $12,300 per student, so it's the per pupil expenditures in the district.
All right. So while it might sound good that we'd get $5,000, we're actually, we're still, we would still be in the hole for having that.
No, because, no.
No, we wouldn't be.
Because we get, we could count the student in our Chapter 90 funding. When they leave, it's like we, it's a double pain because we not only lose the state aid for that student, we also have to give the community $5,000.
Oh, okay. All right. Mr. Veil.
Just to be clear, I don't think the marginal cost of educating one additional student causes us to write checks of $12,253. I mean, I take that to be, here's our total budget divided by the number of students, and that's what it sort of works out to be.
That's the per pupil. It's the total, it's not budget, it's the actual expenditures by the district.
So, but if one more student just shows up in a room that has an extra desk...
It would go down because the number of students would...
Are we on the same? Are we on the same page?
No, I don't think so.
No, but that's what the state would give us, gives us for each student. So we would get another, an additional $12,000.
Oh, okay.
If this student came to Wilmington.
It's part of the foundation budget.
Yeah. It's part of the Chapter 70 funding.
And just as a follow-up too, there's no requirement of reciprocity in this, right? It's not like one of our students can go to Burlington, provided that a Burlington student can come here.
Correct.
Dr. Quick.
Sorry, I got a little muddled with all this information. So you're saying $12,000 and then an additional $5,000? I heard $5,000.
If a student leaves Wilmington, say for the student at Burlington High?
Yes.
Chapter 70 funding is a formula based on the number of students enrolled. So that student that leaves Wilmington means Wilmington receives $12,182, whatever it is, dollars less. So we lose $12,000. Plus, in addition, we have to pay Burlington $5,000.
I see. Okay. Got it.
So out-of-pocket, it's $5,000.
Yeah.
Mr. McCasey.
And the reverse is true as well, that if a student comes here, we receive an additional $12,000, plus we get the $5,000.
Right. Which is what I was thinking. Wanted to make sure.
I would entertain a motion that the Wilmington School Committee vote not to participate in the state school choice program because of a lack of available space to accommodate out-of-town students. Mr. Hayes?
I move that the Wilmington School Committee vote not to participate in the state school choice program because of a lack of available space to accommodate out-of-town students.
And do we have a second? Mrs. Bonish. Okay. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six in favor. Abstain?
Abstain.
One abstain. Thank you.
I'm breaking tradition on this one, coming to you early, but I believe that the stats I was saying, I'm recommending that Tuesday, June 12th be the last day of school for students and staff barring any weather-related school closings. It would be a half-day for students and a full-day for staff.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? Okay. I'd entertain a motion to make June 12th, 2012, the last day of school for students and staff barring any weather-related school closings. It will be a half-day for students and a full-day for staff. Mrs. Carroll.
I move to make June 12th, 2012, the last day of school for students and staff barring any weather-related school closings. It will be a half-day for students and a full-day for the staff.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Dr. Quick. Okay. All those in favor? Yeah. Unanimous, Lynda. Thank you. That's the one thing tonight that everybody's going to be concerned about. Last day of school, that's going to be the favorite thing. Tomorrow, they'll be talking about it. I love this.
Before we go to delegations, I would like to stop for a moment. And we would like, Mr. Vale, we'd like to speak to you a moment about your leaving the committee.
So soon.
So soon. The three years whizzed by, did it not? It's been very interesting having you onboard with us. And it's very important to have somebody who has, one of your agendas, I would say, was the green agenda, I think you could agree. And at this time in what's happening in even the state, the green agenda is very important. It's really important. And you've kept us on our toes about that. And I know that we'll all be thinking about that as we go forward and, you know, where we can continue to make improvements with green agenda.
Mrs. Benton?
Can I add to that?
Yes, please, I'm going to have everyone say.
I just would like to thank you, Quincy, for pushing us to think outside the box, raising the bar on achievements and focusing, bringing the focus back to academics. I really enjoyed the challenges that you've given to central office. Extremely thrilled that you encouraged us to invest in Destination Imagination. I'm sorry that your team did not win, but we are sending a team again this year to Tennessee, to Tennessee.
Yep.
And the, what I understand is it's unusual to have Wilmington having two teams in two years going down to the Nationals is incredible. So you really sparked interest in the community for a program that is really benefiting many, many students. And I do agree with you. I'm hoping I can figure it out before I leave Wilmington, but I think it should be happening during the school day. And we should be teaching all kids the kind of skills that Destination Imagination teaches a few. And that, to me, is truly an example of 21st-century education. So, thinking last night about what I wanted to say to you, I was thinking about the whole process the past three years because you've really been involved in the planning of the vision for the new high school. And I think that, I always had you in the back of my mind when we were meeting with the high school working committee about what really pushing everybody, and it's hard to do when you don't know what the future looks like, to come up with a structure, a physical structure that is really 21st-century. And I was actually at a meeting today with superintendents and I don't, we got on the topic, and I said, I really believe Wilmington is going to have the first truly 21st-century facility in the state. And so I thank you for bringing that kind of questioning and wisdom to the board, and I will miss your tough questions. So thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any comments?
Well, I think, you know, we're obviously going to miss you, Quincy. You're very forward-thinking. I think, you know, we'll catch up to some of your ideas in about three years, you know, it's, you know, roll back the tapes. But, you know, one thing that I've learned from Mr. Vale is always to, you know, when you're given data, to put it in context. And, you know, just a few minutes ago, when he was asking those questions regarding smoking, you know, you know, what do those numbers mean? How do we rank compared to other districts, et cetera? So that's something that I'll always take away from, from Mr. Vale. And again, I think you're going to be missed, and best of luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you very much. Well, I hope you haven't heard the last of me, so we'll see.
Absolutely.
I don't know if I get to take any parting shots or not, but...
Hold on one second. Let me just...
You sure you want to give that to him first?
Yeah, I know, I was thinking the same thing.
So interesting. I'd like to just...
Stand up.
This is presented to A. Quincy Vale in honor of the dedicated commitment to the students of the Wilmington Public Schools for service on the Wilmington School Committee from two thousand nine to two thousand twelve.
Great, thank you very much.
And, this is a good one. This allows you to go into any sports event for free.
Excellent.
For the rest of your life.
Rest of my life, yeah.
Rest of your life.
Free pass.
And we just, we wish you the best.
Thank you so much.
And we know we'll be hearing from you. If you have anything to add to us, let us know. Feel free to say a few words.
I want to thank you all very much for the words and the recitation. I hope I've had an impact and, you know, the token of my time here with the plaque. I'll cherish this for the rest of my life. My only parting words are to say that, you know, maybe stepping down from the committee, but I'm certainly going to be very interested in what happens. I'm very invested in this community. I have three children and two are in the public schools here. I'm very, very interested in seeing how the 21st-century curriculum is implemented and the new high school building is utilized to its fullest potential to be a partner in that educational effort. I'm very interested in seeing how the precepts that we've been laying down are implemented through all the other grades. I'm excited about the implications that technology can have, not as an end in itself, but as a tool. And we're going to have to struggle for a long time with trying how to teach our children and our students how to use that tool wisely and responsibly. All tools, well, technology is like a weapon, it's a two-edged sword. It can be used for ill and it can be used for good, and that we need to work with our charges to make sure they understand the difference and know how to use it for good and to minimize the ill. All that being said, I'm excited by the strategic plan that is in the works and hopefully will be adopted soon. And I would just urge my fellow committee members or soon-to-be former committee members to remember some of the things I was asking for, I think, at the superintendent's evaluation. I think there are some real opportunities to build a structure at the home office, if you will, that, you know, provides for alumni affairs and provides for ongoing institutional advancement and fundraising. I think it would be relatively very short dollars to establish such an institutional ability, and I think would pay dividends for many, many years to come. And I think pretty much everything else are things that I'm glad to see that are being worked on and will continue to unfold, and I'll be watching closely. And I have everyone's email address, so you may hear from me from time to time. Thank you so much.
That would be great. Thank you, Quincy.
Okay, we'll go on next to delegations. Back tonight, okay. Other reports, does anyone have any? I have one thing. Robert?
I'm going to read my letter. Is that okay?
Yes, I couldn't get it on my computer. Sorry.
That's okay, yeah. So there's a Technology Task Force meeting tomorrow morning, nine o'clock at the West, and there's a High School Building Committee meeting next Thursday, six-thirty at the Town Hall. Obviously, can't report on those until they happen. But I did, just putting my hat on as the legislative delegate, the MMA came out today with a press release regarding a statement on the FY thirteen state budget bill released by the House Ways and Means Committee. According to the MMA's initial analysis of the budget, the key proposals in the House Ways and Means Budget Recommendations include the following, this is all good news, adding eighteen point five million dollars to Chapter Seventy's school aid to ensure that every city, town, and school district receives an increase of at least forty dollars per student above current education aid levels, increasing special education reimbursements by eight point four million dollars, a significant addition that would benefit every community, and this is something that we touched on at previous meetings, providing eleven point three million dollars for the transportation of homeless students under the McKinney-Vento Act, adding a new line item to reimburse cities and towns for the cost of this new mandate. So I thought that was all good news. And obviously, this is just the House Ways and Means Bill, but, proposal, but promising news, anyway. And then, two school committee meetings ago, Mr. Marchesi and I think the school committee agreed, they had asked me to write a letter to our delegation regarding the unfunded mandate of the new teacher evaluation process. So this is, this is my best shot. Okay. The Wilmington School Committee strongly supports the Massachusetts Association of School Committees' efforts to protect and expand education funding, reduce capricious regulations, limit unfunded mandates, and ensure that new education laws are reasonable and workable for school districts. In particular, the school committee agrees with the MASC's prediction that regulatory issues will reach an unprecedented level over the next two years as the state's new educator evaluation system and the alternative structure for measuring success are implemented at the same time as we adapt our curricula to match the new Common Core standards. As outlined in MASC's Public Policy Priorities two thousand twelve, recently promulgated regulations require the implementation of a new educator evaluation system for teachers, administrators, and superintendents in Wilmington by the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. The regulations will require renegotiation of collective bargaining agreements for unionized educators and a much longer evaluation process for principals, non-union department heads, and central administration, central office administrators, including the superintendent. Preliminary estimates are that building administrators will need to commit up to ten additional hours per week to fulfill the requirements of the new regulations, while the superintendent and central office staff will also need more time to fulfill their obligations. In addition, there will be the requisite professional training and development to educate the affected professionals about the new standards and evaluation processes. The school committee, with the support of Superintendent Benton and her administrative team, chose not to become an early adapter to the race to the top. The district had just successfully negotiated a three-year contract with the Wilmington Teachers Union and was not prepared nor inclined to re-enter negotiations so soon thereafter. As a result of not following the state's rigid rush timeline, the district will not be able to receive any monies to help fund this monstrous mandate. We implore you to do all that you can to fund this unfunded mandate and give the Wilmington school system the financial resources it needs to implement a new teacher evaluation system along with the other race-to-the-top requirements. Sincerely, Robert Hayes, Legislative Delegate, Wilmington School Committee. So hopefully, there's nothing factually inaccurate in there, but, so what I'm going to do, I think, is I'm going to email this to committee members, and if they have comments, they can get them to me within the next few days.
That's one of the first things I couldn't get on, like, from you, the computer. I don't know why, what way it came.
I have a new, I just installed a new Microsoft Word.
Oh, okay, so, Mr. Marchesi?
Just a comment in terms of the distribution. I'm assuming you're sending it to Rep. Micelli?
Yep.
Representative Murphy?
Yep.
Senator Tar?
Yep.
And hopefully Congressman Tierney as well?
Absolutely.
I think it should be sent to the local newspapers also.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be good, yeah. As a letter, yeah, as a letter from the school committee to our delegation. I think that would be great. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Do you like that idea, Mrs. Benton?
Sure.
Okay.
Just a logistical thing. You need to save it under a doc.
Okay.
For people who don't have, who have the old version of Word, they can't open your, that's why.
It came out all squares.
Yeah, so you just have, all you have to do, Robert, is just save it under a different doc and send it back out, and we should be able to get it.
Oh, great, thank you.
Absolutely, I'll do that.
Does anyone else, so what we'll do is send you back...
I'll email it out so you have it down in paper, sometimes, you know, on paper.
Yeah, I do that.
I might do too. And, you know, I know that if I'm sending this to the press, their deadline, for the weeklies, anyway, is what, Monday at noon? So if people want to get comments by, say, Sunday, that would be fantastic.
Something just came to us, and I, I'm trying to think whether it was from the Massachusetts Association, just came to me, and they haven't stopped on this evaluation. There's a whole other thing that's going to happen, and it was horrifying.
Well, this legislation that Stand for Children has filed that the Attorney General has cleared for the November ballot, that's pretty scary because it would take, it eliminates professional status, but also eliminates a lot of the sort of responsibilities of the superintendent, so I think we're going to be hearing a lot.
That's where I heard it was Understand for Children.
Yeah.
Yes. That's really scary. And I go back to saying that I don't understand this at all. I don't understand what these people are thinking. Nobody who is an evaluator now is not going to be the evaluator for this. So when you look, when you look at something like that, like, you run your office and you run it one way, then we're going to change the way you run it, but it's still you running the office. So if you were a person who felt that you could fire people, then you would. If you were a person who felt that you could mentor people, then you would. What's going to change now? You know, I just, if people are strong in their evaluation techniques now, are they going to be strong with this new evaluation? Are they going to be weak? It's, I think we're going about it the wrong way totally. If you think something's wrong now, we have an excellent evaluation system. We have a fair evaluation system that people just did on the latest contract. In fact, we were partly there because of the way that this board and administration did the contract and the WTA. We were on the right track. And I just feel it's so unfortunate that higher-ups from above can get involved in this, and I just think it's inappropriate. And I'm so proud that we're sending a letter, and I, really, Robert, you did a great job on that letter. And thank you all for wanting to send a letter. I think that we can be leaders around here. Yes, Robert?
Can I give you a great quote from the, excuse me, the Day on the Hill? The MASC president in her opening remarks, I like this, she talked about the cumbersome, excuse me, the cumbersome evaluation process. And her quote was, "If you're not confused, you're not paying attention."
I love that.
I like that.
That's excellent. Thank you so much. Anything else on that? Great, yes.
I just have a question, if somebody could. Why do you think that, was there, what was the basis of them making this drastic and, you know, monumental change?
Race to the top, federal government funding. In fact, if, you know, what's interesting is Boston just had to turn back nine point four million dollars because they couldn't come to an agreement on how to extend the school day for the underperforming schools, but it's all federal government regulations and requirements. And what's interesting is in January, when this first came out, the model evaluation, at the winter conference, all these superintendents were saying, oh, we are going to enter into a memo agreement with our union, we're going to adopt the model. And I just sat back and didn't say anything. Today, the President's Association got up, Maureen McCray, and said, I just want you to know that I don't think there's any school district in the state that's come anywhere close to adopting the model. So there's no way that this is going to be done in time for the fall. I mean, I think the commissioner has been pushing this through. There's, you know, they got the grant, the Race to the Top Grant, and there's all these requirements. And we have had, in the past month, had to administer a survey, tell survey, sort of a teacher satisfaction survey. Our principals actually received calls the Monday, on a Monday morning, there were messages on the tape from the Department of Education. It was not a robocall, it was a real person reminding them to get their teachers to fill out the survey. Now, that was the week of MCAS. And believe me, MCAS was more important to principals than a survey, so it's getting, it's very, very frustrating. And frankly, I had a feeling that the requirements were going to get worse before they got better, and that's why I recommended, and so very grateful that you did not agree to be a Race to the Top.
And two hundred and thirty districts did decide.
Yes.
So we made the right choice, it seems.
We did, because what can they hold against us? The Race to the Top money? Since we're not getting the Race to the Top money...
Forty thousand dollars over two years.
What can they do to us if we do not participate in this? Maybe it's going to come down to that, that we'll have to not participate in this when it comes time, that we might not want to go as, into it as deeply.
Well, no, we have to. Two thousand thirteen is the law.
You have to. You have to. That's the disappointing fact, Mrs. Gaines, that even though we voted not to participate and not take the money, it's still going to be shoved down our throats, and we're still going to have to do it, even though we didn't take the money. So dangling the money in front of us was, I think, a joke because they're still going to enforce it whether or not you take the money.
Right.
So I think that was just, you know, switching, you know, switching bates, you know. They showed you one thing and they took it away from you.
Dr. Quick?
Which was basically what we talked about the last meeting. Robert, would it be possible to kind of incorporate that discussion into that? Because that's, I mean, that's what's so frustrating to us, is that's exactly, you know, we specifically say we don't want to be a part of that program, and yet doesn't make a difference. There's still, whether you are or not, they're still making, you know, making you do these things that...
Give us more years.
Yeah, to the point where, even though they made it seem like we had a choice, but we didn't have a choice.
We really don't, right.
There wasn't a choice.
Absolutely. And two other things I got from this, talking with this president of the Mass Association of School Committees, just regarding what we just said, that there are a hundred and eight annual deadlines that central administration staff have to meet through the Mass DOE and the federal government, I guess, and that's another quote, "State after state, special interests are trying to centralize power in state and federal capitals." I thought that, you know, said it all right there, too. So I think you have people at the state and federal government trying to really take control away from the local governments, the school committees, and it's quite unfortunate.
There's always something there, I think. Okay, I just wanted to invite you on Friday, let me see, April thirteenth, from seven-thirty a.m. until one-forty p.m. in rooms two... 1:40 p.m. in rooms 247 and 248 at the Wilmington Middle School for their annual tech fair. It's seven thirty to 1:40, yeah. And it's this Friday. The Analog Wilmington Middle School Tech Fair has become an annual event for the seventh grade students at Wilmington Middle School. Engineers from Analog Devices provide several displays, demonstrations, and activities in the tech labs and act as their science, technology teachers for the day. This exposes students to what engineers do as part of their everyday jobs and gives some unique experiences for the students in the areas of science and technology. Analog will again be sponsoring the Analog Wilmington Wildcats t-shirts for each student attending the tech fair, and if you identify yourself, if they don't know you already, you get to have one, too. They also have chosen to sponsor some special electronic kits and devices to be awarded as prizes to students. An interesting part of this is that the technology fair is a fertile and rewarding example of educational outreach between local businesses and schools. We have a retired analog electrical engineer, Chuck Kitchen, who teaches in our school throughout the year in our seventh grade science classes. Both students and teachers gain richly from his knowledge, experience, and teaches, and teachings. We are very fortunate to have such a partnership with Analog for our students, and Chuck has recently taped a teaching electricity program with the local Wilmington Cable TV, which has also gained interest from WGBH Educational Television. So we're very fortunate to have Mr. Kitchen.
The kids love him, too. I mean, I know my both boys enjoy him. And when he goes in the cafeteria, the kids are like, hey, Mr. Kitchen, you know? They really enjoy him and he relates good with them, you know?
And this program is unique in Massachusetts, so we're very proud of this program and so if you get a chance at all, it's worth it, like before work, if you can run in or, it's so worth seeing. The kids are so excited about this, which is wonderful, so I just wanted to, that'll be this Friday. All right, correspondence?
None tonight.
Okay, future meeting dates and agenda items. April 25th, we're going to be meeting at the Conservation Commission. And I believe, was it seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock, Town Hall.
Yep, seven o'clock in the Town Hall.
We're just attending the Conservation Commission, it's not an official school committee meeting, correct?
Right. That's in place of our meeting, but we're just attending, yes. Thank you. All right, anything? I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Hayes?
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second? Second, Mr. Marchese, thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda? Thank you. Good night, everyone.